You should receive two pieces of material for this evening. One of them is a stability certified parent on the back of its nine genits of stability. And the other one is audience notes and it outlines your opportunity to participate and also some expectations of the audience. This is a project of the Duluth Superior Community Foundation and the League Women Girls, and thank you very much for being here and thank you for heating the materials up now. Thanks. We have second district candidates Joel Cypress and Ryan Sistad, followed by at-large candidates Zach Filipovic, Janet Kennedy, Barbara Russ, and Rich Uptegro.
Thank you very much. Thanks to the League for hosting these. It was actually four years ago that I was in this room doing my first forum. My name is Zach Filipovic, one of your current at-large city councilors. I grew up next to Chester Creek and graduated from Duluth Central High School. That's where my campaign colors come from. Hurrah for the red and white. I know we're in Greyhound territory, but you know, I'm a proud product of our public schools, my parents in the room, and they are incredible and union parents. I really appreciate them being here. I'm proud of my experience in the city council and as council president, bringing diverse groups and voices together to talk about earned and safe time. We're going to be getting an update on that at council very, very soon. And I have seen that when we support economic equity, we have the resources to provide for public safety, preserve our environment and repair infrastructure. That's what I plan to do, continue to do over the next four years with a vision of economic equity for all. Thank you very much.
Next is candidate Ryan Sistad.
Well, I'm Ryan Sistad. I was born in Foster, Minnesota. I went to high school in Northfield, studied business management at UND, moved here about three years ago. I'm a project manager and I estimate for a strong local union contractor. And I ran because I love this city and I see a lot of potential in Duluth.
Okay. Thank you. Next is candidate Janet Kennedy.
Hi, I'm Janet Kennedy and I'm running for city council at large. And I'm running because I believe a community can survive and prosper as a whole when we're all walking on even ground. One of the things I want to lay down is that, you know, it's really time that we make a difference for all people in this community. A lot of times I hear that we need experience. Experience matters, and yes, it does. The experiences of everyone in this community when we're at the decision-making table helps us to make better decisions. A little bit of my experience is I'm on the planning commission. I work in the Imagine Duluth 2035. I built a nonprofit, the Cross-Cultural Alliance of Duluth. I work on health and all policies around county, city, and education policies. I've built a business called Healthy Alliance of Matter. I'm a parish nurse. And I'm the president of the Spirit Valley Neighborhood Development Association. Along with that, as you can see, I'm an African-American woman. And right now, we have an 11-year difference in life expectancies, and I believe that's an experience and the narrative that I can bring to the table that we need today. And it's time.
Thank you. Next is candidate Joel Cypress.
Hi, I'm Joel Cypress. I currently serve as second district Duluth city councillor. I came to Duluth almost 25 years ago with my wife Claire when I got a job teaching at UW Superior where I still work. We fell in love with Duluth. We raised our daughter here, a native Duluthian who's off at college now, became active in the community. Because we really fell in love with the place, the cultural life, the strong commitment, civic involvement. For the past four years, I've had the privilege of representing the residents of the second district on the Duluth City Council. And I think the most important obligation of an elected official is to make sure that people have a voice when decisions are made that affect their lives. So I've worked very, very hard to make sure that the people of the second district, that their interests are considered when decisions are made that affect their neighborhoods, but also that their voices are heard on important challenges we have like how to repair our aging infrastructure and how to bring equity to our city.
Thank you. Next is candidate Rich Uptegro.
Good evening. My name is Rich Uptegro. I'm a social studies teacher at East High School. I teach economics, American government, and law for college credit to mostly seniors. I live just up Glenwood at the top of the hill in the home that my wife's great-grandparents built when they moved here from Sweden. And we're the fourth generation raising children in that home. My son Lee, who's 12, and my daughter Aurora, who is nine. I want this to be a city that they see as their home and want to raise their children in that same home. I want to be an advocate for youth on the city council. I started my career here working with disadvantaged youth through the Yes Duluth program. From there, I worked at Project Reach Out, a homeless youth program in our community. I've taught various programs in summer recreation. And I believe that we need someone who can advocate and make generational change by improving the lives of the children in Duluth, bringing families to this beautiful city so we can prosper as we have in the past.
Okay. And last is candidate Barbara Russ.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody who is here. And I know this takes some work to put this together, so I'm looking forward to it. I'm also running for a second term because the lack of suitable and affordable housing is preventing Duluth from becoming a city that reaches its goal to stabilize neighborhoods with housing options citywide. Imagine Duluth Forward Together Comprehensive Plan Update establishes interim strategies for the city to use to focus the need for new housing and housing rehabilitation. I believe that my over 35 years of public service sets me apart from other candidates. My experience at St. Louis County Attorney's Office in the past four years continues to provide me with the skills to help Duluth make progress in solving our housing problems.
Okay. So here's the first question. Each candidate has one and a half minutes to answer their question. And candidate Russ will actually start first on this one, although you were last on the last one. Okay, so here's the question. It is very difficult to support oneself or one's family on the current minimum wage. Would you support an ordinance to make Duluth a $15 an hour minimum wage city? Why or why not?
Well, it's not something that I have actually discussed with anyone or even thought about. There's other things that we've been working on that I think are very important as well. I think the $15 minimum wage is a good idea. I guess, I think, however, I think we were going to, first, we should go through all the processes of approving E S S T. And that's really important. I don't want anything that would come up that would maybe knock that off, you know, from the, all of the time that we need to spend on that. But I definitely think we are, that's probably the next thing down the road that we're going to want to look at.
Thank you. Could you explain the E S S T just for those who have that?
Okay. Earned, Safe, and Sick Time. And safe time is something a lot of people aren't sure what that is, but for example, if a parent is involved in domestic violence and needs to go to the hospital, needs to deal with the court system, that is time off from work that a person, if we had that ordinance, would be able to have.
Okay. Thank you. Next is candidate Joel Cypress. Same question.
Yeah. So I work every day with students at UW Superior who are working their way through their school. We have a lot of low-income, first-generation, working-class students, and I see every single day the struggles that low-wage workers have in our country. And I see the stress and the strain that the declining conditions in our workplaces are having. And so I do absolutely believe that we need to do what we can to address things like low wages, unpredictable schedules, lack of paid time off. We absolutely need a $15 an hour minimum wage at the state or federal level, but at this point, I cannot say that I'm for a local $15 an hour minimum wage. We have to do what we can do here to address the situation of low-wage workers and people under enormous economic stress. That's why I favor a local earned and sick and safe time ordinance, because the experiences of other communities show that that is something we can do here in Duluth. But we are a small labor market. We are not a major metropolitan area like Seattle or Minneapolis-St. Paul. And before I would be prepared to support a $15 an hour minimum wage, I would want to see some economic analysis to show that we, as a smaller labor market, could actually sustain that here. So I am 100% in support of the $15 an hour minimum wage and doing what we can do locally for our low-wage workers, but I would need to see the evidence that the $15 an hour minimum wage is something that we can support here before I could support it through an ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Next is candidate Uptegro.
So I grew up in a trailer park on Free and Reduced Lunch with a family that was constantly struggling to make ends meet. And I personally feel that it'll be my role as a city councillor to bring that kind of experience to decisions like this. Target is going to move to $15 an hour, they announced by 2020. I think that you're going to see a movement across the country moving in the direction that Joel is talking about. A $15 minimum wage is coming to Duluth, and it'll come to Duluth through the movement of state legislatures and the federal minimum wage laws. Should we, as a city, work for raising the minimum wage in our city? I think, I think we should, and we do that through open communication, conversation with small business owners, how will this impact you? When you look at communities that have pushed for a $15 minimum wage, it's a graduated system. It moves throughout a number of years. It's not a sudden jump. I have heard people say that a movement to a $15 minimum wage is going to hurt living conditions for struggling families. I think that that is sort of a red herring and a way to throw people off the trail. I have seen what happens in a family that lives under $30,000. $15 an hour is about a $30,000 yearly income. In Duluth, about 60% of the people make under $60,000 in our city. I think we do need to move in a direction to establish a better working, living wage.
Okay. Thank you. Next is candidate Filipovic.
Thank you. You know, I'm an accountant and I do payrolls every week. And I see some people get paid a lot and a lot of people that are clients of mine do not get paid a heck of a lot. And they are struggling every day to pay the bills. They can't save for retirement or put money in the bank for any day or vacation because they need every dollar from their paycheck to pay their living expenses. This is why a $15 minimum wage is needed. I think we, I think it makes more sense to do it at a state or federal level. I think we can do analysis here in Duluth, you know, talking with business leaders, community leaders, making sure that this discussion is going in the right direction. But, and we want to know what that business impact is going to be. We want to know what that impact is going to be on the lives of so many people here in Duluth, because I know I would see an impact for a lot of the people who get paid here in Duluth just through our small accounting firm. But I think it is something that we can focus on to make sure that we bring businesses that put workers first here in Duluth. That's a big part of what I think economic development should be and has to be if we're going to grow sustainably.
Okay. Next is candidate Janet Kennedy.
Thank you. Growing up on welfare and living in the projects and working my way up using services in Duluth, I feel very blessed that I found a way. I think it's very important that we start valuing and looking at how we can increase the resiliency and sustainability of people who aren't making $15 an hour or who are working in low-wage jobs. $15 an hour, I think, is a good start. One of the things we do need to do is make sure we meet, talk, and find a way with all stakeholders and to find the best way to improve the quality of people's lives. The minimum wage is something I want to say wholeheartedly, yes, I want to do it. But I know that's a process, and I know that we have to consider all sources. We have to consider our economic development and just making sure it's going to work for our city. But I believe that when we do, and it will move forward, that we will have good discussions about that and valuing people and making sure that they can thrive. $15 an hour, like I said, is just a start. I remember working my way up, starting at $10 an hour, and one, I remember one day I was making $20 an hour. So it becomes a process. And I just believe that we'll meet, talk, and find a way with business owners and the people who are currently not able to pay their bills. And I guess, as a student, I still am one of those, and I want to make sure I can bring that voice to the table when we make this decision.
Okay. And obviously, the last person to answer is candidate Sistad.
Thank you. I think that the $15 an hour minimum wage should be decided at the state or federal level before it becomes a city ordinance. I'd rather see Duluth get to the point where the market dictates a minimum wage that's past $15 an hour, meaning more living wage jobs, creating more living wage jobs in this area, specifically in the trades and in manufacturing. I think if you just issue a $15 an hour minimum wage to a specific city, you put Duluth on an island, and you give another reason for a business not to want to come here and start and expand. And I think it would hurt the local restaurants as well and any type of business that has low margins and high operating expenses.
Okay. The next question will be answered first by Ryan Sistad. The question is, we have all noticed that Duluth is falling behind in road repairs and maintenance. A half percent sales tax increase has been proposed to help raise money for road repairs. Do you support this solution? Why or why not?
Well, certainly that is one way to help improve the streets, but I think if we looked at other avenues to find funding, like looking to the state legislature of increasing our share of the gas tax revenue, or looking at other ways, like Mayor Larson's new tourism tax that she's been implementing, finding different ways that, I think adding another half percent to the sales tax could hurt, basically, basically, I think it would just hurt businesses. And I think we got to find different solutions other than looking to constantly up and up sales tax, property taxes. We have to look at other ways. And yeah, that's it.
Okay. Thanks. Next to answer is candidate Filipovic.
Thank you. Well, I've been here for four years, and especially this year while I'm knocking on doors, that road construction and horrible conditions that our roads are in are the, most of the time, the top priority of a lot of the people that I talk with. And people that I've talked with want a bold solution to it. And I have to commend Mayor Larson for bringing this forward, because I think it makes sense. We're able to get a lot of work done. This will raise about $7 million, which is certainly not enough for our 450 miles worth of roads, but it's a good start. The sales tax in Minnesota, we do not tax food, we do not tax clothing. We also, we also have the benefit with the sales tax to ensure that tourists or nonresidents are also paying into it for the roads that they use, because when they do come to Duluth, they're obviously using the roads in some capacity to get here. So I am supportive of it. I think we do need to be dogged on the state legislature to make sure that they continue, that they help fund municipalities at the rate that they should be paying if, and I hope there's a question on LGA a little later, but anyway, I am supportive of the tax. I think it's a good plan. I think overall, we need to keep growing our tax base in order to sustainably pay for road construction.
Okay. The next one to answer is candidate Barbara Russ.
Absolutely, I do support that. It's really a better way than putting it on the levy. That would, first of all, putting it into the levy is not going to generate near the same amount of money, believe it or not. And it also, as I think, would be more harmful to some folks, and I just don't think it's the right way to go, and neither did the mayor think that. This way, we are going to, as Zach said, it'll raise about $7 million, and based on the miles that we have, we're going to be able to fix triple the number every year than we would do with any other way of paying for this. So I don't want to see it put into the levy, and I, there is no other, so we've tried to get money from the state, the federal government. They're just, they're just not into infrastructure apparently anymore, so we're not getting any of that money. So this, this sales tax is a very small amount when you really look at it for most people, and sure for some people, any increase is going to be concerning, but that's, I think, the best plan that we have.
Thank you. Next to answer is candidate Janet Kennedy.
Yes, the road repair half percent tax is a good start. We have 450 miles of roads, 400 miles of sidewalks. We need to do something. We need to have a comprehensive plan, because we have 85,000 people who live here and 35,000 people who come into work and leave. And I believe it isn't fair for us that live here and choose to live here that we need to pay for that ourselves. So I think it's fair for the sales tax. Couple of reasons is it's not going to tax our clothing, it's not going to tax our food, and it's a way to get some money into the city. It brings in $7 million. Right now, we have about $2.5 million that we're using for roads, so it's a good start. But that's not the only answer. I think we need to be more comprehensive in looking at that. One good thing is that it's going to be on a vote for a referendum, so we all get to decide. And if we decide that this is the way we want to go as a community of Duluth, this also goes to the legislature, and then it will be earmarked for what it needs to be. So it's a good plan. We all get to decide. I'm going to support whatever we decide as a community.
Okay. Thank you. Next is candidate Joel Cypress.
I do support the mayor's proposal for a half-cent sales tax for streets, and I'm really pleased and thankful that you brought it forward. I mean, just a little bit of background about why we're in the situation we're in with our streets. We had been paying for street maintenance with revenue profit sharing from the casino. We had a series of court rulings that led to us no longer having access to that revenue. And in the four years I've been on the council, we have wrestled over and over and over again with where to find the revenue to maintain our streets. To get the amount of money through internal reallocation for the sums we need for our streets, we'd be looking at closing down our libraries and parks entirely, and that would be how we would get enough money per year for what we need for streets. We held out hope that we could get money from the state legislature. They can't even pass a decent transportation bill for state highways, let alone local streets. You know, we really do need help from the state and federal government, but we all know we're not going to get it, so we're on our own. And sometimes you have to make decisions, and it comes down to this: property tax, sales tax, or we don't fix our streets. And as a community, we need to make a decision, because those are the three options. And the sales tax does make sure that people who visit Duluth for work, for pleasure, to go shopping, will help bear the cost of maintaining our streets, thus relieving us of a lot of that burden, which is what would happen if we put it on the property tax.
Okay. And last to answer is candidate Rich Uptegro.
So I also support the half-cent sales tax. And I just expanded a bit since we're all kind of giving the same sort of answer here. When we think about repairing our roads and our streets, it's not just for people who are driving cars, but this is also a way to ensure more public safety for bicyclists with the major potholes that are out there at night, sidewalks, and getting pedestrian access, and improving just the general transportation of our city. This is a major thing that we need to do to improve the public safety of our city. That it requires the citizens of Duluth to show up and vote and say they want it, I think is a brilliant idea. It's buy-in from the community. It's not dictating from above. I think that's a creative and sort of beautiful way to go about addressing a problem that's a perpetual issue that we all hear at the doors, that we all hear in our neighborhoods, that we experience ourselves. It's also going to save people money. It's going to save people money with the repair on their cars, right? This is something to consider. A small half-cent sales tax is a minor cost with a large amount of savings, and it serves the public needs in a way that is much better than a property tax, as people have explained. That would hit low-income people in major ways, and renting, their rents would go up in drastic ways that are not even comparable to what a half-cent sales tax is. So I'm really impressed with this idea, and I think that all of us knocking on doors and having conversations know that there's always resistance to any tax. But when a creative solution presents itself, I think the legislators will see that the city of Duluth supported it, and so did the candidates.
Okay. Thank you. The next question, which will be answered first by candidate Uptegro, is this. Revitalization has been happening in western Duluth in various ways. One project that has been discussed for revitalization is the completion of the cross-country-city bike trail connecting the Long Beach Trail with the Lake Walk. What are your thoughts about the cross-city bicycle trail and other possible upgrades in western Duluth?
Great. It is wonderful to see the revitalization of western Duluth in general, whether it's the Craft District in the Lincoln Park area, or seeing Whole Foods Co-op decide to open their new branch there, the restoration of the St. Louis River, and turning what was once a super fun site into a super great place to get a new home. I'm impressed with what we've done as a city. Western Duluth is becoming the place to live. And part of what brings people to Duluth is the fact that we won the, you know, outdoor city, the best outdoor city in the nation, and a lot of that is because of bicycles. A lot of that is because of the mountain bike trails. A lot of that is because of outdoor recreation. And when we invest in that type of infrastructure, if you would call it that, when we invest in that kind of recreation in our community, I think we're doing a wonderful thing for improving the environment itself, the health of the people who are there, drawing people to our city, not just for tourism, but as a place to live. You want a community that cares about its park systems, that cares about recreation in a beautiful natural environment. That is Duluth. So doing something like this is what we should all be, be proud that our city does.
Okay. Thank you. Next to answer is candidate Janet Kennedy.
Western Duluth trails are amazing. I grew up, many of my formative years out in west Duluth, even though I spent a lot of time in east Duluth, at Brighton Beach and over at Lester Park. One of the goals I want to make sure is that we have a Duluth that's not east and west, but a Duluth that we are all working together. Working as a president of the Spirit Valley Neighborhood Development Association, we're now reforming the name as the Riverfront Community Development. So I've been well aware of what's going on out there. I'm really excited about the progress we're making. I think it's important that we look at our city as a whole. I love coming to east Duluth, and I hope that someday east people will come to west Duluth. And we can just mingle, ride our bikes or walk, or ride the bus, or what have you. Hopefully someday we'll have a water trolley going up that way, water taxi someday. But that's a vision of mine. But bike trails are important. I think multimodal and all modes of transportation are, and especially bikes are the way that we're moving. And I think it's, it does a couple of things. It keeps us environmentally cleaner, and it provides opportunities for activity. And I think healthy activities coming from being a physical therapy assistant and a parish nurse is one of the things that I think our community needs more of. It also opens up the community for economic development, and we're looking forward to developing east or west Duluth even more, round at a time.
Thank you. Next to answer is candidate Filipovic.
Thank you. Yeah, well, it is really exciting to see the western Duluth revitalization going on. There are things happening at Spirit Mountain, there's going to be things happening at the zoo, just all along the riverfront. I actually took my dad for his, for his birthday, I won't say the age, but for his birthday up the Lakes Prairie, Mississippi Railroad, and then kind of back down the river with a couple of kayaks. And that was really, really fun. So it's really great to see those things happening. The Cross City Trail, I think it's great. I see it come right into downtown Duluth, right on Michigan Street. It helps connect our city, because, you know, we have a history of, like Janet mentioned, the east-west divide, and, you know, this is one more way that we can try to bridge that gap and make it easier for people to physically get to the places where they need to go. And, you know, I think that's important. And I see, even just my own anecdotal evidence, if we'll call it that, observations, people are riding that trail, and they're, they're coming into downtown, and they're going through Duluth with that, and it's, it's an inspiring thing. Thank you.
Next to answer is candidate Barbara Russ.
Yes, I'm very supportive of all the trails that we've been building, and very little city money has gone into this. We've had a great group of volunteers over the years who would want a particular trail, and they'd get, they'd find grant money for a lot of it. And it's not money that can be used for our streets, which is a question a lot of people have, but why are you making trails instead of fixing our streets? And it's hard to explain that. But anyway, I'm very supportive of, one reason is it's good for business, because if a new employer's coming into town, the employer knows that his employees want certain amenities, especially younger people want bike trails, they want... bike trails, they want a lot of outdoor activities. So, it's an important reason for that, and we have to be careful about thinking that, well, we've done enough on the trails, and maybe we don't need anymore. I think we leave that to the people who are using those trails. I'm not one who, I don't even own a bike. Whenever I have owned a bike, I buy it and I ride it maybe a season, and then it's in the shed, and a couple of years later, I sell it to somebody else. But I'm very, very supportive of all of the work that people have done with regard to biking and the trails. It's really very important for our community.
Okay. Next answer is candidate Ryan Sistek.
Well, I think any type of investment into west Duluth is a good idea, to bridge the gap in between east and west. It's good to see, part of who Duluth is, is our trails, and I think as long as we responsibly spend money on our trails, it's good to see, and it's good to see people enjoy them, and Barb's right. Part of the reason why people come here to live here is for our trails and for how cool they are to be here, so, yeah.
Okay, then last, candidate Joel Seigis.
So, I represent the second district, which is on the eastern side of town, but we are one Duluth, and in my time on the council, I have made it a point of principle and pride to work to make sure that, in my role as a councillor, I'm doing what's right for all neighborhoods. And while my primary role is to make sure that my neighborhoods have a voice, that can't be at the expense of making sure that all councillors are looking out for the whole city. I had the opportunity to spend a couple of years as the council liaison to the Parks Commission, so I'm very familiar with the Cross City Trail. And I just wanna say a couple of words about the Cross City Trail in particular, which is what the question focused on. A lot of people on this end of town may be not familiar with what the Cross City Trail is. It's gonna be for the western part of the city, what the Lake Walk extension has been for my part of town and for Lakeside. And those of you who are here from Lakeside know exactly what that Lake Walk extension right out along Superior Street has done for Lakeside, and how the whole neighborhood has benefited from it, the residents, the businesses, and all parts of Duluth deserve that. And so, I think you can have legitimate questions about how we prioritize trails. We can have questions about how do we prioritize mountain biking trails, how do we prioritize snowmobiling trails, legitimate questions. But to me, those kind of multi-use trails, like the Lake Walk extension that really transform neighborhoods, are a high priority, and they are bringing in federal money to get built. And so, absolutely, the Cross City Trail's gonna be wonderful for our city and wonderful for western Duluth.
Okay, thank you. The next question will be answered first by Joel Seigis, and here's the question: Duluth and San Luis coming of a high opioid death rate. Is the current approach Duluth is taking to address this crisis sufficient? What more needs to be done?
Oh, that is a, we had a presentation on the opioid crisis early this year, and what we heard was that what research shows and what best practices show is that it takes three things. It takes enforcement, it takes education, and it takes treatment. And our police department has been working very, very hard making enforcement a priority. But Chief Tuscan came to us and basically said, "We cannot solve the opioid problem through enforcement alone." That education and treatment are as important, or perhaps even more important than enforcement. And I think we made great strides in those other two areas, but clearly, there's much more that needs to be done. We need to make sure that our medical community is continuing the conversations about how to make sure that we're not over-prescribing prescription narcotics. And fortunately, those conversations have begun in our medical community and will be continuing. For a long time, I think there was an assumption that this wasn't working its ways into our high schools, but we know that we have to be vigilant with education going all the way down into the high schools. So, what I would say is, I think we know what needs to be done, and we're on the path towards doing it, particularly in the areas of education and treatment, there's much that remains to be done.
Okay, thank you. Next answer is Rich Petrov.
So, one of the classes I teach at East High School is a civil and criminal law class, and through part of that, I get to have a lot of guest speakers come in and speak to our class, whether they are officers, parole officers, judges, lawyers. The issue of the opioid crisis, if you don't have a connection to it, then it's just the opioid crisis. If you work in law enforcement, if you work in mental health, if you work, which many people do in Duluth, in our hospitals and clinics, then you know this is a major issue. And if it hasn't touched you, then counter blessings. The thing that we can do as a city is the police carry with them, I think it's Narcan, it's a nasal, it's not a syringe, there's no real training involved, it is a life-saving, immediate remedy for someone who otherwise would die from an overdose. That we would allocate funding for the Duluth PD to have that on hand is something that I would fully support as a city councillor when making decisions like that. Those are life and death decisions for people who are not making the choice to become an addict. They may have a lot of mental health and economic issues and things that drove them in this direction, or simply a prescription that they became dependent upon, and it is our responsibility as a community to reach out to people like those and allocate funding in ways as a city that are life-saving measures. So, are we addressing the issue well? Yes, it's more of a medical issue than a criminal issue.
Okay, thank you. Next answer is candidate Ryan Sistek.
Well, to address the opioid crisis, I think, you know, it starts with our law enforcement, but not only that, but when we catch someone, we should kinda change the way of how we're treating the process. I think, you know, on a national level, anytime we see a drug addict go to jail, it's kinda ruins their life almost, they can't find a job, and basically, their economic livelihood for the rest of their life is hurt. We have to, we can't just cast people aside, and when they come back, we have to educate them and try to get them out of their addiction, and then make sure that they're in a good place so that they don't go back to turning to opioid use. I think Duluth could do that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next answer is candidate Filipovic.
Thank you. Well, there's a three-legged stool, Joel talked about it, enforcement, treatment, and education. I remember when I was in school, we had the DARE program, and now we're realizing that the DARE program did not quite work as well as everyone had hoped it did or would. And that's that education piece. And actually, I was at another event with Chief Tuscan, he was talking about, and I'm not sure where this is in the process now, but a reintroduction of a new and revised DARE program with lessons learned from the nineties when I went to school. So, I'm hoping that that will help solve part of the education piece. You know, our fire department receives grants to be able to carry Narcan, and they received, I think it was last year, a couple of years ago, an amount that they thought would last the entire year, and it was gone, I can't quite remember, but it was gone within a month or a couple of months. I see people, when I walk to client sites downtown for work, people being helped by our fire department with this life-saving drug because they have overdosed. It is heartbreaking, and I think that, you know, we are on the enforcement side, we need to get that treatment side back, or actually started, and that education piece back, and, you know, that will take partnerships with both Saint Louis County, the schools, and other partners.
Okay, thank you. Next answer is candidate Barbara.
Thank you. This is really a very difficult problem, and we need to do a number of things. One is, we do need to do more enlightening the community as at large. I think a lot of people don't understand this at all, and if they haven't had this problem in their family or among friends, you know, it can be very confusing. But Chief Public Defender Dan Liu has stated to me, and a number of times, he has stated to me that we cannot arrest this problem away. It's just dragging people into the criminal justice system is not the way to solve this. This is a health issue, and it's a national health issue, and that's the way we need to look at this. Certainly, there are people who are criminals and are making a lot of money off this, coming into our community, selling it. And of course, a big concern is heroin. Heroin is cheaper, it's a lot cheaper. And so, you have young people buying heroin on the street, and they don't really know what they're buying, and sometimes that is very dangerous. So, we need to look at this as a public health issue, along with Saint Louis County and their public health department, the medical community, and we need to all continue to work on this. And I think Duluth is doing a pretty good job in comparison with some larger cities. So, we'll just kinda keep doing this, and we know there's gonna be some problems with funding, but that's something we'll just have to deal with.
Okay, thank you. And last is candidate Jack Kennedy.
Great. So, I agree, we will not enforce our way out of this. This is a public health issue. We tried some enforcement before. I remember the war on drugs, I remember there, and I remember the three strikes here out, and right now, we have a lot of people in prisons and jails that really shouldn't be there. And so, I believe that if we work on this as a public health issue, we have right now the Saint Louis County, and I serve on the Public Health and Human Services Advisory Committee, we're already looking at strategies, how to help our community folks that are dealing with opioids. We also have our community health needs assessment, which is done through the hospital and the county, again, and really looking at what are the strategies and how do we implement those. What I don't wanna see is our law enforcement and our fire and police having to deal with this as an enforcement. Education is good, and treatment is even better, but I think we need to think comprehensively, having the strategies for the people, having the strategies and making sure our city staff are able to tackle what we need to tackle until we can get the people the help that they need. And again, like I said, I do not wanna set up what we've already set up in our jails and prisons with drugs. Let's do this smart, whatever we're gonna do.
Okay, thank you. And if you've noticed a pattern here, candidate Janet Kennedy goes first with the next question. This is a long question.
Uh-oh. Let me write.
So, I'd warn you. Thirty-five percent of Duluth's households and fifty-seven percent of rental households qualify as cost-burdened, meaning that they pay more for monthly housing costs than they can reasonably afford. Additionally, over six hundred households are on the priority list for Duluth's coordinated entry system for housing for homeless people. What is your understanding of the ways the city has supported or can support affordable housing, and what is your vision for how this might change in the future?
So, one of the things I know about affordable housing is we have a decreased lack of housing. We have elderly people who are living in homes that wanna move out and stay in their neighborhood. We have persons living with disabilities where they can't find places to live. Working in the planning commission, I've seen a policy right now, and I'm not against vacation rentals, but when we say we don't have housing and yet we're using housing for other sorts of rentals, it sort of, it makes me kinda think, why are we making that policy? We haven't been, HUD hasn't been funded for over ten years, and so, we need to make sure we're working at the legislative level to make sure we have housing that fits for people. I understand, I was a homeowner, I am a homeowner, and buying a home, and it's still, I feel like it's a cost burden for me, 'cause I am a student, I am taking care of an elderly parent, and I am still working on, not minimum wage, but not quite a wage where I was before. I believe it's our goals, and my goals and my vision, to make sure we're working with Homes for All, for the Housing Coalition, and that we have affordable housing that works for everyone. We need to work at the state, federal, and local level and building collaborations, and making sure we're leveraging some of the tax incentives we're giving for investors. Also, we have a lot of nonprofits that work on housing, and I built a couple of nonprofits, and so, I will continue that work as a city councillor, in that time.
Okay, thank you. Next answer is candidate Barbara.
Well, I've been very involved with housing in the last three years for certain. In the last three years, I think we built a little over a thousand units, and those were two big apartment buildings, and they were definitely market-rate. So, I don't think we need any more of that right now, and I think most people would agree, but what we really need is affordable housing. I go to the monthly Affordable Housing Coalition meetings, and very interesting, it's a lot of people, there can usually be fifty people there from various nonprofits, and from the county, from the city, and so on, and there are a lot of people working on this. But what I wanna see is affordable housing that is scattered throughout Duluth. We have segregated people by incomes in Duluth over the years, and that is not healthy. It's not healthy for neighborhoods, it's not healthy for people, whether they're renting or homeowners. So, that is what we need to do. And money is definitely an issue, but we work with a lot of nonprofits. We work with, of course, HRA, One Roof, LIS, Center City Housing, MHFA, so on and so on. There's a lot of people working on this. There's just not enough money coming our way from either the state or the federal government. So, we're working at it, we're trying to do things in a way that is different than it's been done in the past, and I think we're gonna make some progress. But it's just gonna go over, I would say, the next three or four years before we can really see a big difference.
Okay, thank you. Next is candidate Joel Seigis.
So, I wanna start with just a basic fact, which is that the free market has never produced sufficient, decent, affordable housing for working people. The only way this country has ever produced enough decent, affordable housing for working people is through subsidies. Subsidies like the home interest deduction on your mortgage, that's a federal subsidy to make your housing more affordable, and through all other various programs we have to subsidize the creation of affordable housing. And the reason it has to be subsidized is the cost of construction of building new housing is so high that without a subsidy, you have to charge rents or have housing prices that price a lot of people out of the market. And part of the struggle we have is that, again, the federal government, and this is something I often come back to, has basically left cities defend for themselves, cutting, 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 cutting federal support for building affordable housing. The question is, what have we been doing? Our approach has essentially been for the city to try to coordinate with our private nonprofit partners to get as much of that federal and state funding as we can. It does something, but not enough. What should we be doing differently? We should, for example, when the city subsidizes a housing project, we should require some affordable units, and we need to work still even more closely with our private sector partners to prioritize rental housing for people earning between ten and fifteen dollars an hour, because while we may need housing at all levels, right now in Duluth, if you earn between ten and fifteen dollars an hour, it's almost impossible to find a decent place to rent.
Okay, thank you. Next is candidate Rich Petrov.
One thing that you may notice, living in this area of town, if that's why you're here, is that, you know, One Roof has some homes out in Lakeside that are being built, and are, I think, sort of the cutting-edge way of providing affordable housing, actual homes, family homes, and not, I mean, it's sort of like the panacea seems to be like, oh, let's just do some big high-rises, mixed-rate housing. That's really not working. And the creative sort of cutting-edge line of this is sort of the land trust model built into One Roof's housing approach, and what they're doing here in Lakeside is really innovative. Additionally, supporting Habitat for Humanity, and we've talked about, you know, HRA and other things that are also available. One thing I would wanna touch on is the coordinated entry system for homeless housing. I would love to see Duluth sort of take charge of the fact that we are a city that has high temperatures below zero, that we have freezing temperatures more than six months out of the year. It's on us as a city to sort of show that we do care about the most vulnerable in our society, and that we don't, as a city, have a dedicated funding for homeless services is shameful. It's difficult, but it needs to be done. We need to find ways to reallocate some funding to actually improve the lives of homeless people in Duluth. There's all kinds of other issues about the homeless bill of rights, that's a separate issue of how you treat people, but providing housing and pathways to housing is something that we can do as a city, and it's a burden that we should willingly take on.
Okay, thank you. Next is candidate Ryan Sistek.
Well, in the past twenty-five years, Minnesota's grown, the population's grown twenty-five percent. Duluth has only grown one percent since nineteen ninety. As long as we continue to grow at the same rate that we're growing, affordable care housing will continue to be a problem. I think as long, if we look to ways that growing are tax-based, and look for more living wage jobs coming to the area, more and more people are gonna be able to afford... jobs coming to the area, more and more people are going to be able to afford housing. And currently, right now, what's going on with our slow economic growth, the number-one solution to every problem is, okay, let's raise the taxes, let's raise the sales tax, property taxes. So, it creates, it's harder for people to want to buy a house, and more and more people are now wanting to rent. And as more people are renting, rental prices are higher, which hurts the students in the area. So, we have to look for ways to grow Duluth more percentage-wise in order to solve affordable care, in order to solve the affordable housing right now, the problem.
Okay, and then last is candidate Philip Rich.
Boy, this issue kind of hits home with me. For one, I know my dad is a landlord. He's trying to retire, but I know that I've, since I was ten years old, have really helped him fixing up his rental properties, putting in nails, painting and that sort of thing, trying to make our aged housing stock a little bit better and more upgraded. I have so many friends who have moved away from Duluth because they cannot find an affordable place to live. They have even access to a job, but that job is not paying enough to pay for the high rents that we have here in Duluth. And they are high, and a lot of our housing stock is really, really old. A lot more people are now renting instead of buying houses. That's not unique to Duluth, that's a nationwide trend. And I think that we really do need to continue to look for creative solutions in mixed-use and mixed-income housing projects. The estates over here in Lakeside are a good example of that. I think we need, I look forward to looking at and reading through the city subsidy policy that's being proposed by the administration that will hopefully have, when we're doing housing developments, to have a low-income housing component for developers who want to build and make money off of residents here in Duluth. Thank you.
Okay, and then Zach Filipich will be first to answer the next question. Do you think it is appropriate for the council to take a stand on issues outside the purview of city government such as the Orlando shootings or controversies closer to home like regional water quality? Please explain.
Yeah, this is, this is an issue that, that we're getting more and more emails about, or these types of issues that are maybe not within Duluth's jurisdiction. I made a pledge four years ago that I would not sponsor any resolutions or anything that Duluth does not have jurisdiction over. Other councils are very free to do that. I do my best with the limited time and resources and information that I have to try to get informed on those issues and vote on them the way I see fit. Earlier, I believe, I think, I can't remember when the resolution was with your example, Joan, with the Orlando shooting, but, you know, these are, there are very important topics that we all need to be aware of, and, you know, that was one of them, and I voted yes on that. But I will say that I like to keep my time trying to focus on issues that we have control over. You know, fixing our roads, making sure that we have an expanding tax base, trying to bring in new good-paying jobs to the area that will help everything else, public safety, those sorts of things. That's what I try to focus my time on. Thank you.
Okay, next is candidate Ryan Sistek.
Well, I think the city council should dedicate all of its time to just local issues. These national issues that they vote on in the past are important issues nationally, but it's a complete waste of time for the local city council because their job is to focus on local issues, not national issues. And, yeah.
Okay, next is candidate Jack Kennedy.
Yes. I am actually currently going to school and finishing a degree in Health and Human Services. I'm a senior at UWS College, and I believe any social justice issue and human rights issue is an issue that the city council needs to address, especially if there are people calling on the phone and emailing, I think it's our job to respond. I don't see myself as somebody who's just going to raise or lower taxes, or somebody who's just going to vote on if we can have a building here or there. I think the shift and being sort of progressive with the shift as far as what we see as important in our community is the council that I'm going to be. What I will do and what I'll pledge to do is make sure that I listen to all the concerns of all people, and whether it be in Orlando or whether it be on water quality, as a city councilor, it is our role, and seeing how we can alleviate or maybe even influence anybody in the community that's having an issue. So, from where I come from and the narrative that I live with and the experiences that I've had, I will, I will call and I will email and I will talk to anyone that has an issue, and I believe that would be my role.
Okay, next is candidate Joel Seidman.
You know, there's a long tradition in Minnesota, and there's a long tradition in Duluth, of citizens viewing their local elected officials as people they can go to to find a voice and have a hearing. And so, I absolutely think it's appropriate for this city council to do what the city council has done for decades, and city councils all over Minnesota do, which is to pass these advisory referendums. We want to do it selectively. We need to have criteria. I have criteria for when I will sponsor an advisory resolution, and I think in my four years, sponsored a grand total of two. If I want to share with you a couple of the ones that have been done over the years to show you why it really matters, why it isn't a waste of time. There was an effort a few years ago to amend the Minnesota Constitution to ban marriage equality, and the Duluth City Council, I believe, may have been the first or one of the first city councils in the state to say that's wrong, and that helped turn the tide of that issue. And I think most people in our community are glad that that issue, the tide was turned, and are glad that the Duluth City Council took that step. One of the first resolutions I voted on was a resolution asking the Minnesota Legislature to raise the minimum wage. We've just had a discussion here about how we can help low-wage workers, and most candidates agreed it's better done on the state level. Well, if we think it's better done on the state level and we think that workers, low-wage workers in our community need help, well, then, we have an obligation to tell our representative at the state level that our neighbors, our community members, need help with a higher minimum wage. Of course, it's appropriate.
Okay, next is candidate Rich Gergo.
Thank you. One way that I look at this issue of, I think the quote was "outside the purview of the city council." I feel like some people have mistakenly put the evidentiary, the call for an evidentiary hearing by the Department of Natural Resources into something that is outside the purview of the city council. And so, I'd like to address that that is an incredibly local issue. That is, that is the reason Duluth exists, is because we are on the headwaters of Lake Superior. We have an economy that is built upon fresh and clean water and an environment that people want to come to, and when we, when we stand up and protect that lake and protect our water, we're standing up for the people of Duluth, for small businesses of Duluth, for our economy, for our identity. And if you want to get down to the jurisdictional level, what more jurisdiction is there than the clean water that runs through the pipes underneath the city of Duluth? It's water that wins national awards, international awards, it draws business here, it makes people want to live here, it makes people want to move from where they are to Duluth. When we stand up for our water, we stand up for all of Duluth. That's an incredibly local issue, and to dismiss it as something outside the purview, I think is really missing the point. When I'm knocking on doors, I'm knocking on conservative people's doors, liberal people's doors, and they all sort of echo to me that city councilors should be champions of Lake Superior. And it's important that that is a charge that we take seriously, and that was a missed opportunity on that vote.
Okay, thank you. And last is candidate Barbara.
Well, with regard to the matter that Rich was talking about, I think it was specifically, it was about a year ago, so I don't, can't remember exactly the language, but it was a letter directing or demanding that DNR have a particular hearing. My experience over many years working on things with the Land Department at St. Louis County, I worked with the DNR, and I know that DNR, the DNR knows when they need to have a hearing, they knew how to have these hearings, and it was actually premature as far as I was concerned. I'm very, it's all been sort of turned into a meme that I don't care about clean water, which is just ridiculous. Of course, I care about clean water. As a matter of fact, I'm working with them in SSD to do something about the continual overflows into Lake Superior. That is definitely something we need to be talking with them about and do something about. So, I think it depends on what it is in terms of, you know, dealing with something that seems to be outside of what the city council should be doing. You'd have to look at it on a case-by-case, case-by-case basis. So, I don't think it's an easy answer to question. I really, I really think you have to have the specific facts and what the issue is.
Okay, thank you. And Barbara Russ will answer this one first.
Okay. All right.
I told you there's a pipe. So, what is the role of the city council in establishing earned, sick, and safe time? I think we had to talk about that one a little bit. It's a second question.
What is the role of the city council?
Yes, in establishing earned, and safe time.
Okay. Well, at this point, well, our role is going to be to decide exactly what the details will be of the ordinance that we would be passing. And we haven't received from the task force that's been working on this, whoa, for I don't know how long, probably close to a year. And I think in the next thirty days, maybe, we might be getting a presentation from them about what they are going to ask us to choose from. I think we're getting maybe a couple of ideas to work with. So, so that's going to be our role. It will be to decide exactly what the language will be in that ordinance.
Okay, next is Rich Gergo.
So, this is, this is an issue that I, initially drew me into the race, the earned, sick, and safe time ordinance. So, I've, I've been to the public meetings prior to the task force actually calling on the second stage of people to come in and say, what do you recommend in the ordinance? So, initially, it was people sharing their stories, and they were passionate stories, they were emotional stories, and that was one phase of the process. And then it went to a new set of hearings where you're going to talk about what specifics parts of the ordinance do you want. So, when we're, when we're asking what role will the city council have in an earned, sick, and safe time ordinance, they're going to hear a presentation from the task force. And some of the things that are going to have to be decided is, when do you get to start earning that time? Is it on, is it on day one when you start that job, or is it possibly after you've worked there for a full year? How many hours total can you bank, or is there going to be no maximum on the hours you can bank? Once you've started saving those hours, how soon before you can use them? So, you can start day one, but you can't use them until you've been there for a year. These are all the ins and outs that we, as a city council, need to determine and need to work on. Even just the ratio of, is it one hour for every twenty hours worked? That's the sort of the federal standard, or is it one for every thirty? How does this all work out? So, our role is going to be to hear what the task force recommends, and then deliberate upon the various ways that we can implement a earned, sick, and safe time that will actually benefit the workers of the city.
Okay, next is to answer is candidate Joel Seidman.
So, as, as Barb mentioned, we have a city council task force, appointed task force studying the issue of whether Duluth should adopt some sort of guaranteed earned, sick, and safe time for all workers in Duluth. And they will be making recommendations and presenting those recommendations to the council on the twenty-third of October. Currently, nearly half the people employed in Duluth have no access to any sort of paid sick time or safe time. And so, the question becomes, what can and should we, should we do about it? As other candidates have said, ultimately, this is a decision for your elected officials because we are the ones who are accountable to the public. We have a task force that will make recommendations, we have to make the decision. I think it's important for people running for office to be really clear on whether or not they support an earned, sick, and safe time ordinance, and I do. And the reason I do is that, having studied the experiences of other communities that have these ordinances in place, some for many years, it's clear that these sorts of ordinances, when they're well thought out, when they're structured in a way that takes into concern the practical needs of employers, that it's workable. And because it is workable, it's something that I think we are obliged to do, to try to address the kind of stresses that a lot of working people in our community are struggling with. So, yes, it's the role of the council to make the decision, and yes, I believe we should do it.
Okay, thank you. Next is candidate Janet Kennedy.
Yes, the role of a city councilor for the earned, sick, and safe time, as people have mentioned, is looking at the ordinance language once the task force has moved through its process. You know, I have heard even still that some of the employers are having some difficulty with what is going to be moved forward and feeling like they're going to, they're going to come out on the end negatively as far as how they're able to use their earned, sick, and safe time. I believe in valuing employees. I've been a manager, I've been a director of rehab, you know, I've worked all my life, and I've had jobs where I haven't had earned, sick, and safe time, and I understand that it is an important thing that we need to have for community members. One of the things I know that I would do as a city councilor, even though we have the task force, I think it's important that I would still go out and meet with some of the business owners and still having those conversations, because it's not a conversation that should happen just once. It's an ongoing conversation, and as a city councilor, it's your role, I think, to go out and continue the conversation, not just waiting for a task force that, you know, pretty much has met, and then it's coming to a decision. I always believe that there's more that you can hear, and it's better to listen directly sometimes. And so, I do support it personally. I want to make sure we are vetting, though, all, everything that needs to come into making it work for everyone. I believe this can be a win-win for business owners and employers and employees. So, I would like to learn more, and I'm excited about it.
Okay, thank you. Next is candidate Ryan Sistek.
Thank you. Well, I, I think this question is similar to the minimum wage job, and it has, it's going to have similar consequences. Earned, sick, and safe time is going to put, I think, small local businesses on an island if we just do it locally. I think this should be a state matter. And right now, what my goal would be was, is to help increase living wage jobs in this area so that the market goes from good people competing for good jobs, from good companies competing for good people. And what I mean by that is where companies are naturally offering earned, sick, and safe time, because they have to offer that as a benefit in order to get good people to work for them. I think that should be the goal of Duluth right now. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, and last candidate Philip Rich.
Yes, we do have a task force. When I, when I think about this issue, I think about my mom, and I've told this story a couple of times now, but I think about my mom when she was a single mom with my brother down in St. Paul in Minneapolis. She had a very good fortune having a lot of family members being able to take care of him when he got sick and she needed to work. When I was born, my dad was working on the railroad, being gone for days at a time. I was taken care of by my grandparents. Not everybody has those opportunities. In fact, forty-six percent of Duluthians do not currently have access to earned, sick, and safe time. I think it is an extremely important issue, and I think that when I appointed the task force, this is something that I was really proud of last year when I was council president, making sure that we have different voices at the table to talk about it, to study all the other communities that have done this well. And there are, there are states, there are municipalities, there are counties who have made it work. So, I look forward to the task force's recommendations on the twenty-third. The devil is going to be in the details, we all know that, and I think it's a good group of folks, and I, and I look forward to supporting an ordinance when we get it and, and making it easier for people to make a good life here in Duluth, because right now, forty-six percent of us have a really hard time doing it.
Okay, thank you. So, that concludes the questions. I think I looked it up. Now, we're taking questions, we're going to use some questions from the audience, and I know we have some really good questions here, but we aren't going to be able to get through all of them if you're here all night. And we had a great discussion, I'm sure, but, so, I'm going to try to just get through a couple of them. If you don't have your questions answered, please send the candidates afterwards or email them, or in some way contact them with your questions. So, the question is the subject of selling off assets. So, let's see, Joel Seidman first to answer this one, and you'll have one minute to answer this. Would you be in favor of selling any of the following? The Would you be in favor of selling any of the following, the aquarium, the Leicester Park golf course, or the zoo? Why is that?
Number one, the city does not own the aquarium. It's an independent authority, so we have no say over what, whether it is sold off or not, because we don't own it. The zoo is of tremendous value, particularly for people in the western part of the city. And as long as the zoo is financially self, as long as the zoo is financially viable, I do not support selling it. I'll make a general comment, because this gets to the golf course issue. I do believe that the city should provide public assets to meet the interests and the needs of the people of our city. But people's interests change sometime. Leisure activities come into favor and out of favor. And when those trends change and the finances change, we do have an obligation to consider selling off assets if there's no longer the demand. Right now, we are seeing whether there is still sufficient interest in golf to sustain two golf courses. And my view is, as long as there is, we should have two golf courses. But if we reach the point where it is not, we may need to make a hard decision about whether we can sustain two.
Thank you. Next is candidate Janet Kennedy.
Yes, we should definitely support the zoo. I remember growing up out there, riding the old train car that used to be there, and the Thursday, and that was the place we'd go in the winter time and feed the animals. Can't do that now. But right now, western Duluth is growing, and I think we need to give the zoo a chance. We, we have a new director out there, and I'm looking forward to great things happening with some of the plans that we've made. I have, I've been asked about the Leicester Park Golf Course. I have family members who golf, and someday, I want to learn to golf. I think it's gonna be something that we need to vet and have conversations about. I need to learn a little bit more about the process as far as, are we gonna lose one of our golf courses? But I believe golfing is, is something that people enjoy as, as much as bike riding. We may not have the people to sustain it, so let's have that conversation. But there's always, there's always a way. One of the things we talk about is a train out in west Duluth, too, where that's one of the amenities that, what we want to keep. And so, we're having conversations about that as well. But let's come together and talk about it.
Okay, next is Rich Aftergroup.
So, I'm not a golfer. I can prove that to you if you ever want to see it. I found out quickly that I wasn't a golfer when I was invited to come out and take a look at the Leicester Park Golf Course, when one of my former students, who saw I was running for city council, and he's worked there all this, all the time that he was in high school, and now he's at UMD, and his dad worked there, and had this, you know, family history of working at, at the golf course. I love that it's a public golf course, so for a kid in a trailer park, golfing is for people who have money, it's not for people who don't. So, I felt like, well, I don't know, what do I think about having a golf course? What, what does it really provide? And they took me to the Lake Nine, if you know that area. It's gorgeous, it's beautiful. They, they convinced me that it is something that we provide for, for our city. It is something that can draw in tourists. It's something that we can advertise a bit better if we want to try to, to keep it. It's right on Highway sixty-one. They're, they're telling me, "Anchor gets all the visits because it's closer." But, you know, there's, there's people going up sixty-one, I ran out of time. Sorry.
And how long do you do it?
Oh, thank you. You know, I, I play golf, but I usually just, it's, it's a sorry sake to say. And I have played at Leicester Golf Course, and the, the Lake Nine is where you lose all of your balls, and then you look across the vista and try to forget about it. It is absolutely beautiful. Well, I will say about the golf course, that we, we, for the past couple of years now, we have a new manager of both city municipal golf courses, Billy Casper Golf. And just with my own experience, it has been, it has improved tremendously. And I have seen a greater uptick in, in golfers, at least at, at Lester River. The zoo is absolutely an asset that we need to, that we support. Now that we have a director that will be here for more than a few months, and, and with, with a strong board for the zoo, who are extremely committed to, to preserving it and bringing the zoo forward from the nineteen twenties through, well, through now and future use. Thank you.
Okay, Barbara.
With regard to those three, the zoo is important. It's very important, especially for people who grew up here. It's, and people out west, it's very important to them. And I personally do not like to see large animals caged. I don't like it at all, but that's the way it's going to be. As far as, yeah, we don't own the, the others. The golfing thing, we went through a hard time with that, trying to decide. I mean, I don't, I'm not a golfer. My parents were. I never, it looked boring to me, it just never interested me. And so, but my golfing friends, mostly men, dragged me out to the, the Lakes, Lake Nine, whatever it is. And there's even been some thought about building houses there. But anyway, but anyway, we're not going to sell any of those things. It's just not going to happen. We've already mulled over it, all of that, quite a lot at the council. Not that it can't come up again, but the golf seems to be working. Zach's right, that, that we hired the right people, because it's, it's doing well.
And last, Ryan Sistin.
Well, I was telling Joel earlier, I didn't, or I whispered over him that I didn't realize the aquarium was owned by an independent authority, so I learned something new today. Yeah, I think with the zoo, we should always continue to support the zoo. I personally haven't been there yet, I have to be honest. But I've heard nothing but good things about it. As far as Leicester Park Golf Course goes, I was looking over the budget like a month or two ago, and, and I noticed that we're losing money currently every year operating it. And in the meantime, maybe instead of debating about whether or not if we should sell it or keep it, maybe look into leasing it out to a private company for a couple of years in the meantime, until Duluth can take it on again. That's one thought. But as far as choosing between selling and keeping the Leicester Park Golf Course, I say we keep it.
Okay, thank you. We are getting close to the closing remarks. We could do one more audience question if I give you thirty seconds.
Oh.
Okay. So, this will be starting with Ryan Sistin. So, you got, can you do this time for us?
Okay.
Okay. How do you work to show civility with all citizens, especially those who disagree?
By always showing respect no matter what. And the company I work for, our slogan is "Guided by Integrity," and always have integrity. Always try to be as honest as you can, and if possible, be a hundred and ten percent honest with people, because all you have at the end of the day is your word.
Barbara.
Well, my experience is that the people who are really ornery and nasty only email. So, not a problem.
You did it in thirty seconds.
All right.
Okay, Zach Kordovich.
No, I, I grew up with the civility posters in school, you know, listen, you know, the civility project that you all have with you. So, just trying to adhere to that and making sure that I remind myself about that. And we're all going to have disagreements. That's, that's part of this job. So, making sure that we respect one another's opinion when it is this different opinion than our own.
Okay, Rich Aftergroup.
Civility is the core of what I teach as a social studies teacher. My classroom is set up in a circle with another circle inside, where everyone can see each other and share their viewpoints. It's my goal as a social studies teacher to help you defend your view passionately while still listening to someone else. If you leave my classroom only able to defend your side, but not able to understand the other side better, then I have not done a good job as a teacher. Last year, I was teaching during a crazy presidential election. That took a lot of work, but I think people left my classroom understanding why people could never bring, bring themselves to vote to Trump, for Trump or Clinton. It worked both directions.
Okay, candidate Janet Kennedy.
Yes. I believe discourse fosters change. And within that, it's important that we meet, talk, and find a way. Being trained in conflict resolution, and I understand that listening is one of the most important things that we can do when we disagree, and being able to understand the other side. And it's okay to disagree, as long as we're respectful about it.
Okay, and last, Joel Cypress.
In my work as council president this year, I've worked hard to set a tone of respect and civility in the council chambers. I also take pride in always treating my constituents with respect, because I work for them. As you may know, I recently had a lapse in a private communication with a close political associate of mine. And part of promoting civility is when you screw up, which we all do, because none of us are perfect, you take responsibility, for which I publicly apologized and reached out to that individual. So, to me, part of civility is also recognizing when we are in error and owning that, which I try to do as well.
Okay. So, at this time, we're gonna have the speech candidate give a one-minute closing statement, and we will start with candidate Zach Kordovich.
Well, thank you, Joan, and thank you all for being here. These league events are always fun and informational. I always learn something new. And it's clear that we have a really specifically engaged populace here in Duluth, and that is really exciting to see. As a council representing all of Duluth, I have really seen and experienced how community-led communications and discuss, discussions can break down barriers in a real, meaningful way. I'm proud of the solid working relationships that I have built with local elected officials and, and community business leaders. I've been endorsed by a number of groups, and you can go to my website to see those. And I will continue to use my experience on the council to help drive progressive policy in a positive way. Until our economic disparities are addressed, our growth will never be sustainable, and we all do better when we all work together, speaking of civility. I believe that there's no challenge that Duluth and all of us, that cannot be solved with, with our engagement and tenacity. And together, we can build a stronger community, and I'll be honored to earn your vote again. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is candidate Ryan Sistin.
First of all, thanks for having me. I'm humbled to be here. I think Duluth has a really bright future, and I want to be a part of it at the local level. And I look forward to exploring new ideas with people on, how do we bring in new companies? How do we bring in companies that are growing rapidly across the nation? How do we bring in Tesla, Amazon, Google? How do we get them here? How do we get Duluth on their radar? And one, so far, in my short political career in campaigning, so what I've really enjoyed so far is getting college students engaged, talking with them about new ideas, new opportunities, so that there's opportunities waiting for them when they graduate Duluth. Kids that are graduating Duluth, they want to leave, because there's no opportunities here. How do we keep them here? There's a lot of talent that's leaving here every year, and I think that's a shame. But again, I appreciate you guys having me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Janet Kennedy.
Hello, I'm Janet Kennedy. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. One of the things I've learned through my church and my mother is to give back to my community. I have gained extensive experience and practical skills volunteering and working in all type, working with all types of people. I believe my extensive expertise as a community leader and professionally will bring a unique perspective to the city council that will fill a gap. Policies affect everyone differently, and the more diverse our policy decision table is, the better solutions we will have. Everyone in our city must do well to sustain Duluth's progress. We must continue moving forward together with everyone at the table, so all Duluthians have a healthy and safe place to live, work, and play. You can all make a difference by voting for me November seventh, and thank you for being here today.
Okay, next is Rich Aftergroup.
Thanks for having us. So, in November, you get to choose two out of the four of us running at large. And I, I think that's kind of great, as somebody who is running, I'm not trying to get just your one vote. I want one of your two votes. And, and when you're deciding, you know, who, who are the two people you're going to vote for, you want to know what distinguishes one candidate from another. And one big distinguishing feature of, of what brought me into the race is that Barb and Zach have explained really clearly why they thought they should not vote to have an evidentiary hearing on copper-sulfide mining, and why it was not their role as city councillors. I believe it was their role as city councillors, and that was a missed opportunity. I will be a champion of our lake, which is a champion of our economy, which is a champion of all of you. I believe that most people want that in their city councillors. You will have that in me. You'll also have a youth advocate, a father of two, and someone who's raising those kids in a home that has been here for a hundred years, the same family for five generations.
Okay, and last is candidate Barbara.
Thank you. And again, thank you to everybody that was here tonight. As I said, when we had our opening statements, I'm running for a second term, because I think the housing situation that we have really requires somebody with experience. I, I'm an attorney, I'm still an attorney, and what I am doing is I'm just taking referrals from the volunteer attorney program. And almost all of those people are coming to me because they're facing an eviction. And once you have an eviction on your record, it's almost impossible to find other rental housing. So, I have really seen it. Let me tell you up close what a lot of people are suffering in this city. And I've got the experience, and I've got the skills to work with the planning department, like I've been doing for four years, to continue to work and work on what we need to do for our people in this city. It's, it's, it's shameful. It really is. And granted, we have old housing stock, but we need to do something drastic very soon.
And last, candidate Joel Cypress.
Thanks, Joan. I want to thank the league, and I want to thank the community club. The league always puts on the, the great forms, really great forms. I want to thank Ryan, too, for getting involved. We need more people to get involved, to make our community a better place. I take really seriously the idea that a city council position is a service position. That's why I first became a city councillor, that's why I'm interested in continuing to be a city councillor. I've worked as hard as I can to provide effective representation for the people in my district and for my city as a whole, and for the city as a whole. And that really means making sure that when decisions are made, that the people who are affected have a voice. The city makes all kinds of decisions, complicated bureaucratic decisions about a rezoning, about where vacation rentals are going to go, where a new project is going to be built. And when these decisions are made, it's important for regular citizens and residents to know that they have a receptive ear and an advocate in city government. And that's why we elect city councillors, that's why we don't have an appointed city government. And so, I'm eager to continue and looking forward to continuing that work.